The meeting for Liverpool City Council of the 31st May officially open and welcome you all here for joining us. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being live streamed. To start today's proceedings, I would like to invite Reverend Tim Booker from St Luke's Anglican Church to read the prayer of council as well as the acknowledgement to country, followed by the national anthem, which feel free to sing if you like, your skills. Can I please invite everyone to please stand?
Great to see you all here, everyone. I'd like to know that not only do you have the prayers here in this chamber, but regularly people around the Liverpool area are praying for you guys to make good wise decisions so that God will go before you and bless you all and Liverpool. Let me begin with the acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Cabragool clan of the Durham nation, and I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durham and Durham nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And heavenly father, we do want to thank you for the greats that have gone ahead of us in Liverpool, that have set this council area up to be the great place that it is. We thank you for their wisdom, their forethought and their concern for the people of this area. And I pray to you, Lord, that you continue to give our mayor, councillors and staff of council that same wisdom, forethought and understanding of how to progress good government here in Liverpool. Bless all of the people that meet here today. Go ahead of them, make their paths straight, take away selfishness and replace that with that wonderful selflessness that comes from you. And may all decisions bless every resident in this area and progresses to become a better, more peaceful, more prosperous local government area. We pray this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much Reverend for your prayers and your all wishes and please pass on our thanks to your congregation. Councillors, we now have, there were three, four councillors attending remotely, councillor Richard Amun, councillor Betty Green, councillor Nathan Hagerty and councillor Kerish McCullyenda. If everyone is happy to accept that way, I'm happy to move. Secondary, all in favour, against, declare carried. Councillor McCullyenda, can you please ensure that your camera is turned on during the meeting? Thank you. And all those councillors to make sure it stays on. Do we have any apologies? Any condolences? Next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 26th of April 2023 and the extraordinary meeting held on 23rd of May. Moved councillor McNair, seconded councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. Are there any declarations of interest? No? We'll now move into the public forum. Today, we have, with the indulgence of council, moved forward a motion that we move forward item number NOM 02, which is Liverpool LGA Safety, which our speaker just presented about. Happy to move, is there a seconder? Seconded, deputy mayor, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. Move over to councillor Rhodes, to your motion.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I don't think I need to say too much more than what was publicly addressed here at the committee, at the council meeting by Mark Coonan. It's obviously a much appreciated reserve. I think that we should add to the motion about the traffic sign, if there is not one there, that perhaps we should put one there to remind people that there are people walking around in that area and it could be viewed as being dangerous. But the motion itself, I think, stands as is written and I appreciate the work of council that has helped to address this matter. And I also point out the fact that it has not involved an increase to councils' cost through the budget. So very well done and we move the motion as is in the council papers.
Lovely, thank you and sorry, that's seconded by councillor McNair. My apologies, councillor McCullyenda, did you want to speak for it? Speak for or against?
Sorry, I just had a quick question. In terms of just...
Can you speak a bit closer into your mic because you're a little bit faint?
Is that better?
Yeah, just, we'll try to get the volume up while you're speaking, but you, go for it.
Great. I just wanted to just confirm that the substance or the kind of, the gist of the motion is bringing together lighting in both the CBD and Lieutenant Cantello Reserve?
Yes, it does contain the safe, as a safety measure for Liverpool, about the safety of the CBD where we've acknowledged that the lighting of the place just does so much for Liverpool to help us fight against the perception of Liverpool CBD being unsafe. The lighting that is still in Railway Street is very much appreciated by the public. That is a matter that is still being worked through by council and council assures us that they will be bringing a report back to council. So the motion that is also written in the book, that we will wait for that further advice from council before pursuing the lighting for safety reasons in the CBD.
Now, just through the, did you have follow up? Councillor McCullyenda?
Yeah, I think that kind of gives me a little bit of a better understanding because I was sort of just wanting a little bit, maybe through your chair and through to the staff, just wanting to a little bit, to better understand sort of any timeframes or, you know, what would work first. So would we be looking at lighting up the CBD first or would we be looking at lighting up Lieutenant Cantello Reserve?
The...
Sorry, can I direct that through to the staff if possible?
Councillor, just second, if you guys, if you want to, you can add, increase the volume, just see if that makes a little bit of difference.
We're still having real trouble. I'm having trouble listening to you, what you're saying councillor, I'm sorry. So I only got half your question.
On your microphones, there's a volume button, so you can put it up a little bit, see if that makes a difference.
My mics are up. Like I've looked at the volume on both, my mic is up. Just a question, that timeframe, what comes first?
Can I just explain councillor, that the information contained about Lieutenant Cantello Reserve has already been included in the existing work and budget. So that is just acknowledging what council is doing. So that is going forward and the lighting for the CBD, we obviously would like to hear from council, the latest update on where that is up to. So Lieutenant Cantello Reserve, some of it has already been actioned. I believe the gate has already been marked as being open till 8pm. So those things that are in the Lieutenant Cantello Reserve motion are already being actioned in the existing budget of council.
I'll just refer to the CEO.
Yes, look, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor, so what you have before you is exactly what's been put to you with the Lieutenant Cantello Reserve. It's been budgeted. If you were, if this motion is approved by council, in particular the 8pm, looking at further lighting etc, that can be attended to. In relation to the balance of your question, which relates outside this notice, the motion in relation to lighting in various other areas of the CBD, I'll take that on notice and come back to you because that's a far more extensive answer to provide you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Yes, I'd like to speak against it.
Go for it.
Go for it. First of all, the budget of 2324 allocates $180,000 for solar lighting and that's in general, it doesn't necessarily apply to Lieutenant Cantello Reserve. And that's if you want to check, it's on the LTFP, which is the Liverpool LTFP, the budget report.
Long term financial plan.
Long term financial plan. Anyway, solar lighting, in my opinion, is not suitable to light the roadway. It would mean removing substantial amounts of tall trees within the vicinity of the solar panels. Shade doesn't work and if you look at the photos that were presented by the resident, most of that road is covered in shade, which means solar cells won't work. So that's not a suitable thing. We do have solar cells there that provide lighting, that's for the playground, but there are no shade trees around there, so that is suitable. It would be far more economical to provide overhead aerial conductors connected to the electricity grid for any proposed lighting of the pathway. The area scheduled is secluded, sorry, from public view and hence a major risk of vandalism as has occurred in several areas, including Lehman's Oval, which was eventually shut down because it's in a similar situation where you have bushland all around the park and there is no residential surveillance of the area. If you remember, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on Lehman's Oval and we eventually had to bulldoze it simply because there was no residential surveying of the area. Lieutenant Cantello Reserve is in a similar situation. Police safety concerns have previously not supported lighting in isolated public areas as it encourages after hours congregation of undesirable activities, especially if toilets are to be provided with lighting after hours. The park has been in operation for many decades without major issues. I would suggest we leave it, but I do support the badly needed roadworks to allow access to the area without needing a four wheel drive. Residents that need to walk their dogs currently have pedestrian access at any time. You can walk beside the gate and get in there and I don't think there's a problem there. I've been there several times. I think I have a reasonable understanding of the area. I would hate to see trees removed to put solar panels up for lighting along there. If you're going to do it, use the electricity grid either with aerial cables, which are relatively cheap compared to underground cabling. And I believe we already have a toilet system, sewage system further in the park and that would have reticulated supplier would suggest if you're going to do it, that that is used instead. But don't use solar lighting. Solar lighting in the long term is not a suitable use for that area. There are maintenance issues involved with solar lighting that I wouldn't like to have to pay for.
Yeah, thank you councillor Hall. The CEO's advised that they will look as, they will look at what is the best form of lighting to get into there. Councillor Green?
I wanted to ask a question in relation to the CBD lighting and safety. Do we know when the last safety audit was conducted in the Liverpool CBD? And I'm also aware that we were, there was a safety survey that was already, that was also conducted. So maybe what we, if we could separate out that from the Cantello Reserve, Cantello Reserve part of the motion, that we receive like a better report that in terms of like a round safety in the CBD, that can give us all that information together so we know which parts that we really need to be concentrating on?
Yes, thanks you councillor Green. I'll just refer to the CEO and his relevant director regarding that question.
Yes, thank you. Look, I'm informed approximately somewhere between one to two years ago. I'll refer it to the director to add any further information.
Thank you. Through the CEO, we did an audit, safety audit in Macmill. I have to get you the date, but it wasn't, it would be close to a year or two as the CEO has indicated, but I can get you the exact timing on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you get to your right of reply councillor, if you can just hold on there. I want to thank you very much for this motion and I also want to thank our two speakers who were here previously. Not you Nelson, but yeah, we'll thank, we'll get to you later on. But I think there's a general theme here ultimately that we're all proud of our community, we're all proud of Liverpool and we wanted to, we wanted to look the best, we wanted to feel safe and we want to be proud of our community. That's a priority for us here. We've been working on it since the last, obviously previous councils, but for the last one year and four months, five months since we've been here, we've had a focus on that back to basics to ensure that we've got more money to make our parks look better, our city look better, look cleaner. The financial management which we're heading towards from removing deficits and heading to a more positive position is allowing us to employ more frontline staff. There's some significant investments which we'll be able to announce soon regarding the investment that in giving our frontline staff the right resources and tools. Just to give you an example, and I did a video about this early on, with all the rain we had last year, the grass, like our homes, was growing very, very fast. And because the ground was wet, we couldn't cut the grass, we had to wait, it was getting taller and taller. When you go to cut that grass, you'd have to go over it multiple times, but it also had a lot of, it put a lot of pressure on our machines. So creating a significant more, more maintenance issues with each and one of those machines. And then what would happen is you go to, if you go back down to the core of the workshop that we had, you know, it's a, from the 1950s, it needed, it needed a lot of work, it wasn't modern, it wasn't fit for purpose and we're making significant investments in that. But that sort of, we're, we're sort of getting down to the core of the problem. Hopefully you'll see more improvements happening, looking at our parks and how do they function better. I know this councillor Rhodes brought up this issue about Cantello Reserve, here goes daylight savings, you come home from work, you want to walk the dog and it's dark and it's closed. So I think what we're trying to do is fix and improve everything that we can because Liverpool is a very big area, 305 square kilometres. So we'll get to it. So we appreciate you coming and telling us about this. These motions like this are important. I don't know if the director of operations has anything out on to specifically what's happening at Cantello for the CEO?
Thanks through the CEO. Only that in context, the opening and closing times were originally the byproduct of community consultation, a plan of management about the park. Within 48 hours of the matter being raised, we reopened the park to 8pm, the signs had been ordered. We'll look at the most appropriate technical solution after the information I've heard today in relation to how we, how we get that lighting into the park. It has to be technically sound and fit for purpose. And the only other thing is about the road speed signage, I think I'll defer that to the, the relevant people within council to understand how we actually get that enacted. But understood that we might be able to do some signage that indicates pedestrians on potentially in the ways.
Yeah, wonderful. All right, and I'll just pass over to you councillor Rhodes for your right of reply.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, as is the intention of this particular motion, is one to make our parks more accessible to our general public, to make it a well-used park. And I think that Mr Coonan really pointed that out, that this park will be well-used. As in regards to the threat of vandalism or damage being done to the park, with these changes to the park does not make that a greater or lesser issue than what it would have been. And the purpose is to make our parks more serviceable to our constituents. You are hearing from the constituents, they are saying you, telling you how they are using this park currently. They are telling you that it's a danger to them walking home late at night because of the, the road not being particularly safe. Of course, there's no point having a dog park there and particularly in these days when it gets darker earlier, that people still need to exercise their dogs. And they can only do that when they've finished work. So there is a definite need for all of these things and I strongly recommend that council support this motion.
Wonderful. That being said, I put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. Next item is, we'll go to Plan 01.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move to defer the item.
Yep, move that it be deferred. Do you have a second or councillor McNair?
I'll second that.
Seconded councillor Rhodes, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Can we just maybe do that again because I need to record that as a planning matter? All those in favour to defer? Against, councillor Coonan, use your hand up. Unanimous? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. So we're now moving to mayoral minutes, of which there are three for today. The first one's regarding our major events. Today, I'd like to recognise the tremendous success of the three recent events that brought our community together. Most Blessed Nights, Anzac Day and Motherland African Festival. All three events were executed with great care and detail by council staff. Most Blessed Nights and the Motherland African Festival, cultural festivals that showcase the diversity of our community through food and entertainment. These events attracted tens of thousands of people, of visitors and provide a platform for local businesses and community groups to connect and engage with each other. Both events were a fantastic celebration. Sorry, that just blocked my vision for a second. Of the multicultural fabric that makes Liverpool a vibrant and inclusive city. Anzac Day was also very successful with a Moving Dawn Service March and commemoration and a community event that paid tribute to the sacrifices of our brave servicemen and women. The event was attended by many residents and visitors who came together to honour the Anzac spirit and reflect on the importance of remembrance. I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude to all the council staff who worked tirelessly to make these events a success. Their hard work, dedication and commitment to our community have been truly exceptional. Further to the above, I propose that we make Warren Service Way car park free on public holidays and on weekends to encourage greater community participations, participation in events such as these and visitation to businesses in the CBD. This will not only promote accessibility, but also alleviate any potential financial barriers that may prevent some residents from attending these community events and spending more time in the CBD. I urge my fellow council members to support this motion as it would be significant step forward promoting community engagement and fostering a strong sense of unity within our city. And I'd like to move... The following points is applicable. Councillor McCullyenda, do I have a seconder?
Happy to second that, Mr Mayor.
Seconded councillor Rhodes. Councillor McCullyenda?
Sure, look, Mayor, I think this is a good move, especially in terms of increasing the usage of Warren Service Way car park and reducing some of the financial barriers for people who want to access such events. Can I also suggest that we look at, at dedicated spots for businesses or community organisations within the Warren Service Way during the week? Because I've been advised that some local not-for-profits or local community organisations have staff or, you know, have clients that utilise or that require accessibility measures and having some dedicated spaces that, you know, for local community organisations will enable them to facilitate those people accessing those services.
So what you'd be referring to there is council investigate implementing permit system for certain user groups. So I'm happy to add that as a point five, that council investigate a certain, investigate a permit system for specific community groups.
Can I suggest that we tighten it up and make, and basically make it a permit system for local business or community groups and then, or not-for-profit?
Sorry, when you say, when you say local businesses...
So not business, for local not-for-profit or community groups.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think they'll have come back to us with a report on that one. So I'm, you know, they get the gist of it, I'm sure that they'll work it out and we can have a proper discussion about it when the report comes back to us. Yeah, just end it in business, please. Yep, yeah, as a seconder, happy with that? Councillor Rhodes?
So we're leaving in businesses?
No.
No.
No, no, we're removing.
Adjust the... Thank you.
Not-for-profit and community groups and community groups, please.
Yes, happy with that.
Yep. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. The next one is about naming the Larnier Community Hub. Councillors, I'd like to put forth a motion to name the building at Phillips Park after distinguished and highly esteemed Harry Hunt OAM. The Larnier Community Hub is an integral part of our city's social fabric, providing essential services, fostering community connections and serving as a gathering place for residents. Harry Hunt is an individual that embodied the values and spirit of our city. His unwavering dedication, outstanding achievements and tireless commitment to the betterment of our community make him an exemplary choice for this honour. For over four decades, Harry Hunt was a prominent figure in our community, devoting himself to numerous philanthropic initiatives and making a lasting impact in the lives of countless individuals. His selfless service, strong leadership and unwavering advocacy for education, healthcare and social welfare have had far reaching effects, transforming our community for the better. His tireless efforts have provided countless opportunities for growth, learning and development, shaping the future of our community for generations to come. Not only has Harry Hunt contributed to the infrastructure and services of our community, but he's also been a steadfast supporter of the arts, culture and sports. His belief in the power of these endeavours to bring people together and foster unity has inspired countless individuals to pursue their passions and achieve their dreams. By naming the new building at Phillips Park after Harry Hunt OAM, we would not only honour an extraordinary individual, we would also like to celebrate the values of general honour an extraordinary individual, but would also like to celebrate the values of generosity, compassion and dedication that he has constantly exemplified. The Harry Hunt O A M building would stand as a beacon of inspiration, reminding future generations of the profound impact one person can have on a community. I urge my fellow council members to support this proposal and acknowledge the invaluable contributions of Harry Hunt to our community. Let us commemorate his exceptional achievements by naming the new building at Philip Park in his honour, ensuring that his legacy endures for years to come. And I'd like to move the motion as is, and I'd like to point out also to the councillors that we also explore the feasibility appropriateness of incorporating the dual naming to recognise the honour of our First Nations community in consultation with local representatives, elders and community members and any other member who would like to have a voice.
Happy to second that motion.
Second, and Council Rhodes. Is your hand up, Council Calianda? Yep, go for it.
Go for it. Look, I think point three of your motion covers the main substance of my question. But how would the dual naming with First Nations work? Because my understanding was that the site was subject to an agreement and a memorandum of understanding with Gannagara Local Aboriginal Land Council and therefore there is a strong First Nations history which we must recognise on that site. So how would the kind of dual naming work? Can I just get some clarity on that, please?
My understanding there is nothing specific regarding this site that is in contravention of what is in that deed. But obviously, that's how we would go in the spirit of it and the councillor Green's advocacy in previous council meetings about co-naming and so forth. So we would just go about doing that and see what feedback we get from the community. But I think it's very important that all members of the community get to have a voice, not just a certain few. So everybody will be able to have some feedback on this. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is regarding the federal budget. The recent federal budget was centred around the crucial theme of cost of living relief and prioritising those who are most in need. I am pleased to share with you some of the key initiatives that I believe are relevant to the plight of Liverpool's citizens. On the outset, it is important to acknowledge the Albanese government's two-year plan to allocate 1.5 billion to electricity bill relief, helping more than 5 billion households and 1 million small businesses. Eligible households will receive up to $500 and small businesses up to 650. That's approximately between one-quarter to one-third of a household's average annual spending on electricity bills, a welcome announcement for the people of Liverpool. Further to this, 1.9 billion dollars over five years will be provided to financially support single parents. Around 57,000 single parents are expected to benefit. The childcare subsidy announced in October's twenty-two budget begins on the first of July. Families earning up to $530,000 per annum will be eligible with the subsidy rate tapering down as family incomes increases. Around 1.2 million families will see childcare costs fall. Previously announced changes to the paid parental scheme will give a half a billion-dollar boost for families. Around 180,000 families across Australia will benefit. Job seeker payments, all study, youth allowances will increase by $40 per fortnight. Eligibility for a higher job seeker base rate will expand to people over 55 years old who have received the payment for more than nine consecutive months. Those eligible will get an extra $92.10 a fortnight. Commentary on the federal budget regarding increased immigration numbers over the next two years is of some concern to the council. As reported in the press, the respected A M P chief economist, Shane Oliver, warned that the projected immigration increases, along with the rapid rebound in immigration over the last eighteen months after the pandemic, roughly equated the amount for more than 200,000 additional dwellings at the same time as supply of new dwellings has significantly slowed with labour shortages, cost blowouts and supply chain disruptions. Indeed, we are witnessing the collapse of a few building and development companies in the market. The budget forecasts nearly a doubling of migration this year to 400,000 and 750,000 people over the two years. Liverpool is a proud migration success story and we warmly welcome migrants to our city. However, with rapidly increasing levels of migration and declining housing approvals, we know the pressure this will put upon the cost of living through rents and house prices. In addition, councils in high-growth areas like Liverpool and South West Sydney are seriously struggling to keep pace with the basic infrastructure associated with population pressures. Infrastructure supporting new housing like roads, drainage paths, parklands and social infrastructure like community centres, childcare and sports facilities. I welcome the announcement of Miss Anne Stanley, A M P, the federal member for Wareawat, for the federal government's funding for the region, including $2 million for road infrastructure in Liverpool. This council hopes it is only the start of stronger support for councils in the growth belt of South West Sydney who must bear the economic burdens of the increased migration number over the next two years. And I'd like to move the motion as in the booklet. And just for last thing, I'd like to say for members of the public, Liverpool receives 100 new residents every single week. That's around 30 vehicles. The southwest of Sydney, which is Campbelltown, Camden, Wallundilly and Liverpool, get 300-plus people every single week moving into this region, all driving past us and into this area. That's 18,000 people every single year moving into the southwest of Sydney. Hunter's Hill Council is only 15,000 people, to put that in perspective, and that growth is going to be happening for the next 20 years at a bare minimum, just to put that in perspective, let alone the growth in traffic with all the industrial areas that will be happening in and around the airport and with the other service lines. Second, Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to, there's one matter of urgent business. And I'd like to move that the, I believe the matter is urgent. It's a report put forth by the C E O regarding 600 Cow Past Shore Glen Waters Estate. Book five in the confidential addendum booklet.
Happy to second the motion as being urgent.
Yep. All those in favour of the matter being urgent, raise your hands. Against? I declare it carried. Without going into specifics, because we don't have to go into closed session. I understand this actually saves us money? Can I just, through the C E O, what will the saving, will this actually lead council by adopting this?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the estimated savings at this stage will be $167,000 in interest costs because the loan will be drawn down in two stages is the real impact of it. And I want to take this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, through you and council, to thank the staff, in particular the director, Farooq Potelli, who as of today is now the director, and for all of the hard work in continually finding savings for council.
And the C F O. Very generous. Thank you. And his team, thank you. Well, well done, council staff. That's fantastic, very happy. Any saving of money is very positive and it's not insignificant. Any discussion or anybody have anything they'd like to say about it?
I'm happy to support this motion. Not only does it save council money, but it is also an investment into Liverpool. It is property that can only go up in value. This is a sound, positive move for council that we should have learnt a long time ago. Thank you.
Happy to second the motion.
Thank you. Council Harl, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'd like to say the opposite. I think it's a bad investment. I don't think we should have done it in the first place. I congratulate the C F O for the savings that you were going to find to do that, and that would be fine, and seeing as we are obviously buying purchasing it, that's fine. But I'm still totally against the idea. I do not believe that the purchase of that property was necessary in the first place.
Thank you. Okay, well, is any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion carried. Okay, we'll now move on to Plan Zero One, which is on page forty-seven of the booklet, with the recommendation on page forty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we did Plan Zero One previously.
Oh, sorry, I marked the wrong one, my apologies. Plan Zero Two is the one we didn't do. Page eighty-nine, tab two, the recommendation on page ninety-one. Thank you, councillor. Page eighty-nine. Moved, Council Harl. Second, Deputy Mayor. I'd just like, with the indulgence of the move and the second, I'd like to recommend that we add a point three. That the three levels of government work together to forward fund the infrastructure delivery as part of the contributions plan.
Happy to accept that.
The three levels, yep. And just for the indulgence of everyone who's here, when development happens, the developer makes a contribution to fund infrastructure as per the plan. We know the Areatropolis and all the significant activity that's going to be happening with the new airport and the Bradfield city centre. This plan will now provide some certainty to people and I congratulate the staff for getting it all ready. But what we don't want to be in a situation is like we have in other areas where we have to wait ten years, we have to collect the money for ten years and then deliver the road. That causes ten years of unsafe areas. We need to be more smarter as a state, as a country, as a council about how we deliver infrastructure. We know the development is going to happen, so let's deliver that upfront, which works out to be cheaper and more importantly, safer for our communities to the extent of possible, rather than create situations like we're seeing today in Austral where communities don't have footpaths, drainage and have to wait many years for it to come. Forward funding. Yeah, so work together for forward funding infrastructure delivery as part of the contributions plan. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is COM Zero One. Community grants and donations, page one hundred and eighty-eight, with the recommendation one eighty-eight. Move Deputy Mayor, second to Council Harl, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is COM Zero Two, page one hundred and ninety-eight, tab four, with the recommendation on page one ninety-nine, Madavi Pacific Cultural Arts.
Happy to move that.
Move, Council Rhodes. Second, and Council McNaught, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is corporate support reports, Corp Zero One, page two oh two, with the recommendation on page two oh five.
Second, Dave.
Two oh five, four. Move, Council Harl, second to Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is Corp Zero Two, page two forty-two, tab six, with the recommendation on page two hundred and forty-three, the investment report. Move, Council Harl, second to Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is Corp Zero Three, online confidentiality, page two fifty-two, tab seven, recommendation on page two hundred and fifty-two. Move, Council Harl, second to Deputy Mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is Corp Zero Four, Low Government Remuneration Tribunal, page two sixty-two, tab eight, recommendation on page two sixty-two. Move Deputy Mayor, second to Council Harl, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against? Declare it carried. Next item is City Futures Report, C F D Zero One, page three fourteen, tab nine, with the recommendation three fifteen.
I have some questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councillor.
I thank council for the work that they've been doing on the R V Park opportunities for Liverpool. I am aware that there are councillors that are currently on the council that weren't on the council when this issue was first raised at council. And I do believe that they may not understand what an R V Park is. The report from council might have been further complicated by speaking about camping and glamping, which wasn't a part of this motion, and indeed has different concerns regarding the opportunities for Liverpool and in what areas they might be able to be achieved. The questions that I have that are not clear to me is that Hillies Park was identified by council as a high-risk flood area and not suitable for the proposed R V Park. My worry about that is that these particular R V Parks are designed to go into flood areas. And I have it from their advice that the evacuation of R V Parks at times when is necessary. They work very closely with the S E S and have ample time because R V vehicles simply drive out of the area. There is also confusing issues in the report as to what is required in this R V Park. What are they providing? What would council need to provide? Look, I would simply like to move a motion that we refer the R V Park to the governance committee so that we can discuss this fully, so that other councillors can be brought up to speed about what an R V Park actually is. And it might be well worth asking if a representative from the C M C A would like to attend that meeting, either online or in person, to explain what a C M A Park actually is and what it would mean to council. The reason why, well, that would be my motion for a start, so we'd better deal with that first.
Happy to second that motion.
Yep. Happy to move them as a whole.
Deputy Mayor, if you'd like to put your mic on, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now? I'll remove the motion again. All the committee report moved as a whole. Are you in five, our councillor? Okay. Thank you. Saniamis, thank you very much. I declare the motion is carried.
Be careful what you wish for, right? Great. Question with notice, I think, Council Hagerty, are you there? I think Council Hagerty left the meeting, from my understanding. Is that right? Council Hagerty left the meeting? Yep, Council Hagerty left the meeting. So we'll see that, councillor Green? Happy? All good? Council Calianda, your next two are yours? Yep, all good? All right. Committee Zero Six. The run sheet has Committee Zero Six next. Probably looks like I just jumped in the wrong spot. Yeah, no, no, I'm saying my, I just have it down here.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, councillor?
That's me. In terms, in relation to the classification and maintenance of state roads, and we've got the table there that indicates what roads are state, do we know, is there a timetable as to when the state will make a decision to take responsibility for those roads?
Councillor, I'm happy to take that on notice because the short answer is no, but we're anticipating some information shortly. So let me get back to them because we are pushing for an answer, if I can use that expression.
Councillor Green, I wonder if you'd be agreeable to that? Councillor Green, I wonder if you'd be agreeable to that also going to the governance committee so that we can have a full and open discussion about all the issues around traffic and roads?
I'd be happy to do that, yes. I'd support that councillor Rhodes.
All right, lovely. Yep, councillor Caliander?
Sorry, just on these, I acknowledge the responses that have been provided to the questions, but what recourse is there when, you know, we've received resident feedback that is at odds with the advice that we've just received? So for example, you know, taking the street landscaping consultation response, it says at minimum impacted residents and businesses are notified via letterhead planning ahead of any impending works. Now, obviously been contacted by a number of both residents as well as local businesses who have not had this consultation or this notification provided. What recourse is there? How can we address some of these gaps? Because, you know, just going back to the previous responses as well, when I specifically asked what measures currently exist to make sure that issues don't fall through the crack, you know, reports are generated identifying outstanding requests and internal escalations are activated. That doesn't provide any recourse for the people that have identified an issue lodged, you know, lodged an issue with customer service and have then been left waiting three months or six months until they lodge another request and then go around, go around again. I just don't think, you know, there's a disconnect between what resident feedback is coming back and the response that has been provided.
CEO. Look, thank you councillor, and it was, there's a lot of echoing happening, so I think that's half the problem. Most of your question gets echoed through the chamber. Can I firstly say that I'm happy to meet with you offline and speak to you more on this in detail? Numerous changes have occurred with customer service, numerous changes are occurring with council requests and resident requests coming in, being followed up, being dealt with. You know, I want to congratulate our customer service team, in particular the acting director, Anna Rissos, who's been doing a huge amount of work to go through some fairly substantial backlog from last year which had been taken. That's the first aspect. The second aspect was that there was an occurrence that we've now put a stop to where requests would come in, it would be dealt with, but it wasn't being taken off the system and still appeared to be on the system, which of course was causing a, that's now stopped and we're dealing with it. So the best thing I can say to you councillor, if you become aware of an issue that has been in the system for a period of time that you think is unsatisfactory, please immediately put in a councillor request. Feel free to bring it to my attention, we will act on it immediately, whether it's the director of operations, whether it's the director of customer service, we will deal with those issues ASAP and come back to you. Again, happy to take it further offline if you wish.
Yes, I would appreciate that, but can I just make it clear that what I'm identifying is in no way, shape or form specifically directed at the customer service centre and I acknowledge the amazing work that Anna and her team do, but I, you know, given the number of issues that have been raised with me, I think it's important to do a little bit more of a broader check at how these things are flowing through the system, you know, who's responding to them, how we're identifying whether things get responded to or not. So it needs to be a little bit more of a broader issue than just a customer service one because, you know, the context that's been provided to me suggests that it's not the source of the issue.
Look, thank you councillor, I missed that part earlier of your question, so I apologise. But again, I think this is a really good area that we could take offline. If you can bring specific examples to me, that helps me enormously to deal with that and of course, but I can assure you and all councillors that we are making substantial changes to many of our systems to be able to deal with these issues and I will be coming back reporting to you in the future in relation to that.
Lovely, thank you. So we have to do the committee zero six, which is the minutes of the governance committee.
I would like to pull out item O six in the service and community integration to Cassula Powerhouse Art Centre with an amendment to the motion. That's in you.
Just to clarify for the minute, when the deputy mayor moved the committee reports in globo and they were approved in globo, that should show committee reports zero one to zero five inclusive. It did not include zero six, which is being dealt with separately now.
Yep, and that's just because the way, we're just following the run sheet. Okay. Yes, so councillor Rhodes, what's your motion?
Okay, the motion which is on page seventeen of your amendment book, if you're still looking for it, is that happy with the motion that has been put with the change report to, not the CEO, but the governance meeting. And for that report to include information regarding the master plan for the visitation precinct. And also to include the envisaged options for the Liverpool museum. That is strategic in terms of the resolved motion for that area as a visitation precinct.
Yep, do you have a second, or?
The report in front of us now has nothing to do with the, with the motion is moved now. Because what it says here of the governing committee meeting, hold on a minute. Keep going, please.
It refers.
That one should be separate, separate motion, nothing to do with the recommendation of the minutes.
We haven't adopted the minutes. I've pulled this out of the minutes. I've pulled this issue number six out of the minutes and I've been asked to address it, I believe.
Yep, so if you're happy, just pull it out and we can deal with, you know, you had a motion, seconded, who's the seconder of the motion? Second deputy mayor. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. Now we go, that was moving the minutes, wasn't it? As well, just that?
So now we move the minutes, I'm happy to move the minutes.
Move the rest of the minutes, move councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Goodman, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. All right, lovely, thank you. Now we move to nom zero one, family friendly apartments Liverpool CBD, page three eighty six, tab nineteen with the recommendation three eighty seven, councillor Rhodes.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Moving the motion.
Yes.
Seconded by councillor McNaught. Lovely, go for it councillor.
I have an amendment.
You have an amendment? Yeah, what's your amendment councillor?
Speak to my amendment first.
Well, we're going to let the councillor Rhodes speak for her motion first as the mover.
Fine.
Figure, let her do that, then happy to give you the next turn, councillor Rhodes.
Okay, well, it's a pretty simple motion. It's become apparent to council that studies from university are showing that there is an increased need for family friendly apartments in the Liverpool CBD. And the difficulties that we have with that is that how do we go about delivering it? And the ways that we go about to encourage a greater proportion of the units that we're offering to the market to include a greater percentage of family friendly, family friendly apartments would need changes made to our regulations and it would also need, of course, some initiatives that are set by state planning to encourage developers to put, make available more family friendly apartments. The, I won't go through the long, long amount of information, I'm sure the councillors all read that, the background, that's where the information has been provided to councillors so that you can understand why and how there is the need of this motion. It's going to be a difficult thing for us to achieve and we accept that from the advice of council, but if there is a need for this in Liverpool, as there was a need for it in the Hills area, we should be doing everything we can do to accommodate what the people, what the constituents actually need in Liverpool. So I've included in there the website for the actual report from the university. So the motion is for council to investigate amendments to the local, to the Liverpool Development Control Plan that will encourage this type of development. It is to investigate the improved quality and design requirements that matches the specific needs of families. We've always thought that it was a stepping up pathway to, people would buy an apartment first and then move on to a larger, perhaps single dwelling as they become more financial. What we are finding from the university studies that in Liverpool, it is not that way. There is a need for families, so there is a need for three and four bedroom apartments, which we provide very little of at this stage. But as I said, the third point is to write to the federal and state planning ministers to give us some incentives that we might be able to progress this. So I urge councillors to vote for this motion.
Wonderful. Thank you councillor Rhodes. Councillor Harl, you have an amendment?
Yes. The amendment is to defer this motion to a briefing session where these issues can be discussed in greater detail. And the issues I wanted to raise are, do you want me to, yes, I believe I should raise these issues before we actually decide on the deferment.
Yeah, it's probably, it's probably something to discuss if you wanted to, like in the planning committee, because that's the appropriate forum to.
Well, I have some issues with the way the motion is worded.
Yep, what are your issues councillor Harl?
Okay, despite the University of Western Sydney research, I believe families with young children are less likely to want to live in multi-storey apartments and that is primarily due to a lack of security and open outdoor space and playgrounds. Parents want to be able to see their children play. The reality is that economic factors drive the choice of multi-bedroom apartments and far more needs to be done to attract families to apartment living if that is what the community wants. Confining young children indoors due to a lack of secure outdoor playgrounds will contribute negatively to the social interaction that children need. The DCP should not just be about increasing the number of three bedroom apartments for family living, it's primarily about amenities that are needed to ensure we don't encourage future ghettos with lack of essential amenities for families to make use of. Keep in mind that government sponsored research indicates sixty seven percent of residents living in apartments cite availability of public transport as their main reason for purchasing apartments. Hence, I would suggest rewording or deferring the motion to ensure that the needs of families with children are met prior to simply increasing the availability and number of three or four bedroom apartments within the CBD. Notion needs to be reworded to reflect the overall needs of families and that cannot be achieved in the Liverpool CBD with the current limitation of available outdoor space. It is simply too late to do that. Elsewhere, yes. So I was going to suggest that the motion be deferred to a briefing session where planning can look at the possibilities of incorporating those requirements that families need. I think that's basically what I wanted to say.
Would the councillor be happier with the fourth point? Will the councillor be happier, happy with the fourth point that simply says that the report further to the investigations, which would include all those questions that you just brought up councillor Harl, be brought to the governance committee?
Deputy Mayor?
Okay.
Where are you into that?
Motion all about investigation, which is mean, at the end of the day, all the information will come back to council.
That's right.
And the amendment put forward by my colleague councillor Harl is asking for information session. So in this case, we can add like a point four, okay, after the investigation where the councillors will come back to us for an information session to discuss the outcome of the investigation and anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, I think that was what I said councillor, and if councillor Harl is happy with that, I'm certainly happy with it. Councillor McNaught, are you happy with it? And thank you councillor Hidded for supporting the.
It's number four, the investigation all comes back to us, full information session and discuss issue.
All right, great, I'll put the motion that makes everyone happy.
He's happy with it.
So whatever, whatever motion that was that made everyone happy, do you want to sort of repeat it? Do we have it there?
It's on the screen.
On the screen? Great.
Number four.
Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried.
Oh, dearie, oh dearie.
We now have a presentation from councillor McNaught and I'd like to pass on the floor to councillor McNaught.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The presentation is on the screen in case my voice gives out before I finish giving the presentation, so please excuse me. So I'd just like to take a moment to recognise the amazing efforts of the Liverpool Youth Council, particularly with reference to the recent Youth Week festivities. Youth Week ran from the twentieth until the thirtieth of April twenty twenty three with activities throughout the CBD and Carnes Hill, celebrating the theme, connect, participate, celebrate. Activities included First Nations art workshops, skate coaching and workshops, hexagonal football and wonderful food offerings from the Humanity Matters food truck. An event which was scheduled to take place at Ed Square during Youth Week has been postponed until Friday, the ninth of June, so next Friday from five PM till eight PM. So don't miss the opportunity to check out the music performances and table sports organised by these incredible young people. I've had the privilege of being on the youth council for the last, just over the last year. And as this youth council is coming to an end of their three year term, I'd like to congratulate them on their achievements and thank Derek Tweed for his guidance to the youth council. I have recently been involved with the interviews for the potential youth councillors for the next term and I take great comfort in knowing the passion and drive our young people have for making Liverpool the best place it can be. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you councillor.
If I could ask that we could just write to thank the youth council for their service for the past three years and congratulate them on their achievements?
Happy to second that.
Can raise you a letter and do a little civic ceremony to thank them for their work and effort?
That would be wonderful.
All right, so councillor McNaught moves that we hold a civic ceremony thanking the previous youth council, the outgoing youth council on their, on their term.
I do, thank you.
Right, second, happy to second that. Seconded councillor Rhodes, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item we have is com zero one, page three ninety nine with the recommendation on page four hundred. Can I ask the councillors, because the next four items are regarding. Can I ask the councillors, because the next four items are regarding land acquisition, all the same, does anybody want to move them a whole or is there one that you wanna, you wanna bring up?
I'd just like clarity on conf O three.
All right, don't worry about it. So yeah, conf zero one, three nine and page four hundred.
Happy to move that way.
Councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor McNaut, all those in favour, in discussion, all those in favour, against a declarate carried. Next item is conf zero two, thank you, page four three, recommendation on page four O four.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor McNaut, in discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarate carried. Next item is conf zero three, page four nine, recommendation-
Happy to move that way with further clarification, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much to the staff or the deputy of information supplied after we deferred this at the December meeting. What I really want to know is before we take possession of a road that is dedicated to us with no cost associated with that dedication, is that that road is in good repair and is suitable to be handed over to us, you know, not thinking that we're going to have to invest heavily in that piece of infrastructure in the foreseeable future. So if I could just get some clarity that that's also the case, then I'd be happy to move.
I'll refer to the the manager of property services online and through the CL, we'll refer to him.
Yes. Manager of property services, if you could respond to that?
Pro, Provis CEO, in response, as part of this transaction, land would be originally dedicated to council, but there's an agreement with Transport for New South Wales that will be responsible for the construction and delivery of the roadworks that would be suitable for purpose as part of the agreement with the Commonwealth. And it's technically the land that would be dedicated as public road to council.
So we're responsible for the construction of the road?
No, Provis CEO, Transport for New South Wales would be constructing the roadworks.
Is there some mechanism by, by way that we make sure that we're happy with what's delivered to us once it becomes our responsibility?
Provis CEO, I anticipate that there'd be standards that Transport for New South Wales would be required to deliver the road to, but I'm happy to go back to Transport New South Wales and identify a provision for inspection at handover as well, noting that the road would have been dedicated as public road and Transport for New South Wales will be responsible for the construction through their contractors and procurement system.
I think that would be great if we could just have that final sign off before we take possession of that road, that would be what I'm after, thank you.
Councillor Moon?
Sorry, I just, I just wanted to understand one thing, so John, through the CEO, John, you're saying to us that we're responsible for the land, but roads in South Wales are going to actually build it or is it getting handed over to us after the build? You know what I mean?
Pro, Provis CEO, the land would be, it goes across New South, Transport New South Wales, they would give, hand it over to us or dedicate as public road. And then council is the roads authority and Transport New South Wales would construct the road subsequent to it being, becoming public road. So technically they'd have to procure the construction of a public road to the necessary standards, but we would be the roads authority for, for that section of road and responsible for the road reserves. So there are different classifications and generally we're responsible for the road reserves and depending on the classification, we could be accept responsibility to hand over a road as well.
So is that prior to construction or after construction we're responsible, that's what?
So Provis CEO, we would be the roads authority prior to construction of a road. So it's intended to dedicate it as public road and then Transport New South Wales would complete road construction.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we able to incorporate that somehow that we do, you know, have a final inspection check off before it becomes our road to maintain?
Provis CEO, I'll go back to the Commonwealth and Transport for New South Wales and identify that as a condition of council.
Thank you.
Great, so we'll move the motion as per councillor McNaut?
Question.
Yep, yep. As per the book with that?
With that additional point, yes.
With the additional point. Seconded?
Yes.
Second councillor Rhodes, councillor Harald question?
I just, well, no, what I want to do, I'm concerned, I had the same concerns councillor McNaut has, I know the area very well and I go to their resident action group meetings and they've complained about the road reserves having major potholes and that needs to be addressed, that will be very expensive if your council has to do that. So I would suggest that that is addressed before we take it over.
That's, that's exactly what I want, thank you.
Excellent.
All right, if there's no further discussion?
Through the CEO, what?
Sorry, councillor, councillor Moon?
Through the CEO, John was just saying that basically the land gets allocated to us and then the road gets built on our watch. So at the end of the day, we're responsible for it. That's what my understanding is, is that correct, John?
Yes.
Pro, Provis CEO, that's correct, but in stating that Transport for New South Wales have to, has to deliver a road in accordance with relevant standards and statutory obligations.
So the Transport for New South Wales is under, you know, very strict obligations, covenants and conditions on delivering the road, not only fit for purpose, but in all other aspects as well. Their terms and conditions are in fact far more stringent than council's terms and conditions, to be brutally honest.
I'm, I'm, just through the CEO, I'm just scared that we're gonna face the same sort of scenarios we're facing on the, some of the newer streets in Liverpool where, whether they were constructed by roads in South Wales or council, I don't know exactly, but not even a year into the actual build, roads caving in, we had potholes. So I think that's the concern that councillor McNaut and councillor Harald's got. So if it's gonna be done under our watch, but we're not gonna be able to have any input to it, it's gonna be an issue to us once it's handed over and I think that's what the issue is.
I think the question, the real question here for the councils and the concern that they have and it's extremely relevant is that when works in kind is being done for council, what quality assurance measures are put in place to ensure that the work was done to a satisfactory matter? We can take that on notice for, for discussing in the governance committee? Was it a, because this is just wanting one road?
I was gonna say, this is an ongoing, this is hopefully an ongoing mechanism that we put in place before it becomes ours, that we have some sort of procedure to make sure that we are happy with it.
Every subdivision in Austral, there's roads being dedicated to us constantly, all right, so, yeah, so we can maybe have that discussion.
Yeah. Mr Mayor, through you, remembering councillors, that the other alternative is that you build it, you pay for it and you be satisfied as to how it's built. And clearly that is not a position council can be in if it thinks it's gonna build and pay for each and every road. I mean, that's the reality of this.
And we have been getting feedback of not new roads, but when even when road maintenance and resurfacing has been done, that a year later the potholes are popping back up, there's a few residents that have been commenting about that on Facebook, so. But I'm sure that new director of operations in his acting capacity is doing what he can and we'll, we'll deal with that. All right, no further discussion, I'll put the, put the motion, all those in favour, against declare that carried, conf zero four, page four eighteen, tab four nine, page with the recommendation on page four hundred and nineteen.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Harald, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarate carried. Next item is conf zero five, page four twenty three.
Happy to move that way, Mr Mayor, with a amendment.
Seconded councillor Moon, what's your amendment, sorry councillor Rhodes?
Yes, we accept the, the community representatives as, as, as itemised. Look, I want to draw the attention to the fact that we've got a lot of corporate members on this committee and only three community committee members. And I remember passing a motion surrounding this issue and the difficulty that we've got is not all the corporate members of the committee are always available to attend meetings. I have a simple request that as mentioned previously, that the applications may be received on a continuing rollout, if you like, for committee members for the community committee meetings. That enables us to replace people when they find that they can't do it without us having to wait, you know, another twelve months before we get that opportunity to do it. And, you know, things change for people where originally, yes, they're, they're, they're okay with that date, then council will change the date to a different meeting date and all of a suddenly they're not available. And we need to have that flexibility to be able to address that situation moving forward.
Wonderful, great. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against declarate carried. Next item is-
Mr Mayor, can we have it in that motion? Yes, it's there.
It's there, right?
Thank you.
Next item is conf zero six, page four thirty three with the recommendation on page four thirty four, and I would like to move points one, two and four of the recommendation that is in the booklet.
Happy to second, Mr Mayor.
Seconded councillor McNaut, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against a declarate carried. And that being said, that canal concludes. We've done six. That was the one we just did.
I think that concludes the meeting.
That concludes the meeting. Thank you everyone, I now declare the meeting officially closed, thank you.